All right, now it's seven o'clock and I would like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. And we have already introduced the Cadenza School of Music and they were awesome and still out in the foyer out there. So, this evening, we will have our invocation by Chaplain J. John Neo, Lieutenant, U.S. Navy, and then it says CHC. So Chaplain, good evening. Come on down. So would you all stand for the invocation? Flag salute will be presented by Councilmember Jeff Comacero.
CHC stands for Chaplain Corps. So that's what that stands for. Let us pray. Lord God, I thank you for all that serve this great city of Temecula, from our first responders, our teachers, those that serve in the city parks and every single capacity. And I want to give special thanks this evening for these that serve on the city council and lead this great city. I thank you for their service. Some of them are volunteers, I'm sure others might be paid, but they have all made a commitment to lead this city. And so I just thank you for them. I pray for your guidance, for your wisdom this evening, as they discuss the business of this great city, that you would just give them wisdom, help them to make sound decisions that continue the prosperity, the safety, and the peace of this city. And we just ask your blessing upon these things tonight. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain.
Please remain standing as we salute the flag. And as we do, let's be a little vocal. Let's show the country and the world how much we love our country. Please stay with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And I heard you, Councilmember Nigar. Could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Comacero?
Here.
Councilmember Nigar?
I am here today.
Councilmember Ron?
Good evening.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Edwards?
Here.
So we have a couple of presentations this evening, and the first one is, you will notice that we are all wearing purple, or most of us are wearing purple this evening, because we are celebrating and recognizing Because Nice Matters. This was a, this was a practice, let's say, that was established by the Temecula Valley Unified School District after a teacher set it up as a model. Because Nice Matters, and it really does. And the city jumped on board, I think when I was mayor one year, and then we really took it to another level when Councilmember Comacero stepped up and got the city involved. And so we recognize Because Nice Matters every year now, and we wear purple because Temecula is great, because of our residents and the attitudes that our residents have. So if we could have, let's see, is Mrs. Balka's here? All right, come on down. She is the Great Oak High School teacher who started, I believe, Because Nice Matters, and she helped coordinate the campaign. And Tim, is Tim here? Tim Ritter?
He is not.
Oh.
I know.
He's gonna hear from me. And then, I don't know if Laura's here.
Yes.
Come on, come on, come on down, Laura. So tell us, give us a little bit of the history.
Okay, well, that's actually what I have ready for you to go today.
Enthusiasm, please.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly. You will get a lot of that. All right, so Because Nice Matters is an important part of our school culture, and I wanted to share with you all actually how it evolved. So years ago, pre-Because Nice Matters, Great Oak, my students, our peer, my peer leaders, we actually, you know, advocated for the anti-bully campaign during the month of October, which is National Bully Prevention Month. And, you know, our attempts, we were focusing on creating awareness for the detriments of bullying. And shortly after, our former, our retired principal, Assistant Principal Judy Stapleton, met with me, and she proposed an idea for changing our mission, focusing on kindness rather than anti-bullying. She shared this phrase that she found on a door hanger, "Because Nice Matters." And she shared this idea for signature colors, purple and black, symbolizing the internal bruising caused as a result of the things we say, the actions that we commit. From this moment on, my vision, my mission had changed. The answer was no longer focusing on the darkness of bullying in our school campaigns, but rather the light and hope of kindness in the everyday. So every year, Temecula Valley Unified celebrates our Because Nice Matters Week with a week-long kindness challenges, special purple and black spirit days, again, signifying the pain caused by bullying, and then a white-out on Fridays to symbolize the idea of a fresh start, that no matter how we've treated people in the past, that it's never too late to spread or inundate the world with kindness. I'm so grateful for our citywide support. Because Nice Matters is no longer a week-long campaign, but rather a unified commitment from all of us, and our commitment making this world filled with pain and suffering a little more caring, a little kinder. And we can do it united, together, because nice matters. Thank you.
So that's excellent, and we have a proclamation, as usual. So let me share this with you, and you will notice that we have on the original Be Nice Matters shirts.
Exactly.
So you posers up there on later editions, but that's okay.
Excellent.
So, let's read what this says. "City of Temecula Proclamation. Whereas the City of Temecula is in strong support of Temecula Valley Unified School District's Because Nice Matters Campaign of Kindness and Anti-Bullying, and whereas Because Nice Matters is an important message to be addressed by all students in Temecula as well as the citizenry at large. Everyone should make an effort to be nice to one another." It sounds so simple, doesn't it?
It does.
Yes. "Whereas Because Be Nice Matters includes an anti-bullying component that is critical to the excellent curriculum offered at TVUSD, because no child should ever have to go to school preoccupied with worries of intimidation, fear, and bullying, and all Temecula students who witness another being victimized or bullied should immediately report it. And whereas the TVUSD signature colors to raise awareness of the Because Nice Matters campaign that started at Great Oak High School implemented district-wide over several years are purple with black to symbolize the colors of internal bruising that occurred when someone is bullied. And whereas the last full week of September each year is officially called Because Nice Matters in Temecula Week, students are asked to wear purple with black showing that being nice matters and to take a stand against bullying. On Friday of that week, everyone is asked to wear white to symbolize a new beginning or a fresh start in treating people with respect and kindness. And whereas this collaboration between the city and school district sends a powerful message throughout Temecula in terms of the notion that nice does matter, not only among our student population, but among citizens citywide. Now I therefore, on behalf of the City Council of City Temecula, hereby proclaim the week of September 25th to be Because Nice Matters in Temecula Week." And it's signed by Mary Ann Edwards, Mayor, which I am honored to be, and representing the city council. Congratulations, it's a wonderful program.
Yes.
And I think it's been replicated now in other parts of the country similarly.
So exciting.
Yes, so, and we have you to thank, and all the kids at Great Oak, and the other schools in the district, and the district office.
Yay, thank you. Thank you so much for all your support. Mary Ann, take her, thank you. Oh, cheer. Gather together, kids. Get close, get close, get close. Speak to them. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam, Madam Mayor, before everybody goes away.
Go ahead.
Before everybody goes away. Come back, come back, come back, come back. All right. Just a quick question and a comment. You guys have Peer Leader shirts on. What does that mean?
They're Peer Leaders.
I know, I guess I will. So Peer Leaders is a program with a mission based on unifying our campuses. We also, we actually are a course, a leadership course at Great Oak, and we work on unifying Great Oak, but we also have elementary and middle school outreach to our feeder schools. So we run assemblies. Each year, we focus on basically empowerment campaigns and send messages of positivity to our K through eight classes.
And, and thank you, you know what, I didn't know if you were gonna say those things, and I'm glad that you did, because I wanted to take a minute, number one, to praise each and every one of you young people, because the, the level and the gravity of what you're doing, maybe you may or may not realize, it has filtered in to many, many other schools, and now it has become in vogue, if you will, to be nice.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you, it has trickled into the special needs community, it has affected people's lives in ways that I, we could spend all night talking about, but just your, you guys starting a spark of kindness, everybody's run with it. And it's, our students here in Temecula, and particularly, have really led the way, not only in the region, but just, just in our whole community, about spreading that. So, you know, I can't thank you all individually, but collectively, from, from my heart, thank you very, very much for the work you little, you Peer Leaders, I shouldn't call you so little, Peer Leaders have done. You really have done a great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That means so much to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
So, we have a little bit of a unique situation here, so we have Mark Caton, who's the Executive Director of Temecula Education Foundation, and he is going to come up and make a presentation of his own. Come on up, Mark.
Good evening. Probably the first time I've been up not alone.
It is, I think it is.
Hopefully, we've got everybody represented here. There we go. Community pride. Community pride is evident throughout the city, in our neighborhoods, businesses, schools, and service organizations. It is contagious and empowers us to set and achieve the highest standards with all the confidence of knowing we are united in a common goal of making Temecula the best it can be. Sound familiar? That's Mary Ann's State of the City opening address. And we thought tonight that this group shows community pride, and especially Temecula community pride. So with that, we'll go ahead and show you a few things. And, Spirit Run.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, council members and the community. I, my name is Sharon Mattis, and I have been a co-chair of Spirit Run for the Arts, now our seventh event taking place this Saturday at Great Oak High School. I do want to segue from Mrs. Balka's comments about Because Nice Matters. I'm the representative from Temecula Middle School for Because Nice Matters, and we've added hashtag #MakeADifference. And being a part of the Spirit Run, being a part of Temecula pride, we are out there making a difference, and we love that our community is sharing that back with us, as being part of our, participating in our run, participating in our school programs, and really making a difference here in Temecula. We are proud to say that, and the numbers have just come in, with our most recent donation, Temecula Education Foundation, we have donated $11,000 through our run, which is a fundraiser for arts in the schools. We are taking our extra money and donating it to Temecula Education Foundation. We've done that over the past six years, and we are thrilled to be able to do that, to make a difference in our community. And we thank the city for your support, and Mark for your support, and especially our students who are representing Great Oak High School, and Mr. Berdick Rutz, who is our leader at Great Oak in the music department, and very proud of what the funds that we have raised are going to be, going to, a combination of funds to promote music throughout our community. Thank you.
Great.
Great. My name is David Lu, I'm the Vice President on Board of Directors for the Temecula Educational Foundation, mayor, council members, citizens, and we're so proud and privileged to be part of this wonderful community. This community, you know, has its roots in collaboration, innovation, and drive for excellence, and we see that in, in our students, we see that in our citizens, we see that in how the community has these ties that bind everyone together. And the Temecula Educational Foundation, for almost the past 10 years, we have had as our mission promoting innovation and enrichment, both within and in addition to opportunities available through the educational school district. We promote the arts advancement. The Educational Foundation has funded the summer school programs for the school. We also provide curriculum support grants to support innovation in the classroom, and through the events that we sponsor, the relationships that we foster, Taste of Temecula, which is our signature event, which not only raises money for our, our causes, it also helps bring together the community and, and local businesses to support this fund. And one of the, of the groups that we wanted to highlight tonight was Susan Miyamoto's group, and her efforts towards promoting enrichment and music. And we would like to bring Susan up to talk more about her organization as well.
We love Susan.
First of all, being an arts organization, I want to thank this, congratulate the City of Temecula for receiving the Helen Putnam Award for Economic Development Through the Arts. Temecula has done a wonderful job supporting the arts in our community and demonstrating that the arts are not only good for locally, the local economy, but in arts, but art events such as the street painting festival, performance at the community theater, and art off the walls, just brings the community together and engages the community. TVCA, or the Conservatory, is pleased to partner with TEF to pilot a Beginning Strings program for 5th graders at Vell Elementary School. We want to wholeheartedly also thank, I have to say this right, Riverside County District Three Supervisor's Office for the Sid Funds Grant that, in addition to the TEF grant, enabled us to purchase an instrument for every student that is participating.
Wow.
Vell Elementary School is a Title I school, and most students would not be able to afford a fee-based program or, in addition, renting the instruments. So we are providing the program for free to them. We also have an excellent experienced cellist, who's a teacher, so they're getting a really good experience and foundation. And why a string program? Extensive research has demonstrated that an education in the arts, which includes instrumental music, engages students in learning, contributes to higher test scores, greater involvement in community service, and reduces truancy and dropout rates. Because of the TVSD budget constraints, students often do not have equitable access to quality, standards-based arts programs. Through our community partnerships, we hope to come alongside the district and help fill in some of these gaps, so that we provide our students with the best possible education, which includes the arts, and that helps them exceed, succeed in school and in life. And I just wanted to read some excerpts from a 2001 statement by Dr. Terry Bergerson, who was the Superintendent of Public Instruction in Washington State. "Arts education not only enhances students' understandings of the world around them, but it also broadens their perspective on traditional academics. The arts give us the creativity to express ourselves while challenging our intellect. The arts integrate life and learning for all students and are integral in the development of the whole person. We must continue to find a place for arts programs and partnerships, not only for what it teaches students about art, but what, for what it teaches us all about the world we live in." And these days, I think that's really important. And my own personal feeling is art is life, and art is what makes us human. So I thank, you know, these groups for the partnerships and, you know, giving us the ability to support the programs in the school district. Thank you.
So, Temecula Education Foundation has had one of our best years yet, and with the help of Supervisor Chuck Washington and his team, and our donation and Spirit Run, we're able to provide the instruments for this class. So it's one of our biggest donations, and we are excited and thrilled to be able to provide that. I just wanted to share, in Temecula, one of the amazing things is, Mary Ann, you were mayor then, when we talked about the Spirit Run, the first, when they had the snow, and we talked about that, and it was still great attendance, it was a great event, and, but the people came and they still made it a wonderful thing. That's Temecula, that's community spirit. Yes, we can't survive without all of those sponsors, and sorry for the, sorry for the bad slide, but Pachanga, Jolly Jumps, Abbott Vascular, Temecula Valley Toyota, one of our bigger sponsors, and in the center is Temecula. And it is the center of this, this whole purpose. And, you know, maybe throughout the nation, there's other things going on, but Temecula is Temecula pride. So, we appreciate the opportunity. Thank you so much for all of your support and, and your help for the foundation.
Well, thank you, Mark, and foundation representatives who are here today, and students, thank you so much, because culture, arts and culture really does provide color to our world. You know, we, we can move forward in a black and white or in a gray society, but it is the arts and culture that really define us as human beings. So thank you very much for all that you've done, and I'm so glad you had your best year yet, and you couldn't have picked a better recipient. So thank you, Susan, for everything that you do for us. Susan helps to provide the music and the entertainment that we have before our council meetings every couple of weeks, and so we really appreciate her contributions in more ways than one. So thank you.
I think the best answer to her question of why strings was earlier.
Yes.
It was beautiful.
It is beautiful.
And so, what an opportunity.
Yeah. So thank you all. Okay, so do we have any public comments?
We do, Madam Mayor. We have four public comments on non-agendized items.
All right, so I will read. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. So could we have our first speaker, please?
The first speaker is Jeff Riley, to be followed by Sarah Russell.
Good evening.
Neighbors and friends and community leaders, I'm Jeff Riley. I am a public school teacher at Isabel Barnett, I've been there for 17 years now. And I wanted to come before you, because as a school teacher myself, I know that when I hear from parents, sometimes when issues arise, it's normally the negative things that come to my attention. If I'm hearing from parents, they've got an issue with me, right? And I know that in your position, maybe you've had that similar experience, but I want to come before you tonight, and I want to thank you. I want to thank you for that road diet that you did on La Serena. Kids can get to school safely at Rancho, they can get to school safely at Margarita, and I think it's a good investment for, to see our leadership in Temecula, investing in the overall community health and quality of life of our citizens, because all good people cycle.
Yeah.
Just a joke, sorry. If you don't cycle, you should get into it, but, really, it's, it's just, it's an honor. I really, I want to thank you for, for making that a priority. I know you might be hearing maybe a little bit of negative comments about it, but I want to come before you as a citizen and say, well done, good job. That is, that is good for the health of our community, and that's it. Have a good evening.
Well, thank you. It's nice to hear positive comments.
The next speaker is Sarah Russell, to be followed by Sean Sampson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Fine, thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the council members. First, I'd also like to thank all of you for your service, and as a retired public school teacher, it thrills me to hear all the emphasis on kindness and arts and culture that's going on in our city. So that's wonderful, thank you. I am here as a Temecula homeowner, taxpayer, and also a resident of Meadowview. My request to the city council is simply to ask you to support a complete evaluation of the condition of the Meadowview streets. And the main point I wanted to make is to remind you that Meadowview has no sidewalks, it has no streetlights, it has no public sewer, and it does not have natural gas lines available, yet 900 homeowners pay the same taxes as the rest of the city that actually does receive those benefits. And the homeowners feel that our streets have been overlooked, although we are grateful that we have started to see some changes. We would like to request again that we get a complete evaluation of all the streets, including Avenida Barca, which is a main street, and, and it's probably in the worst condition, and then all of the smaller streets. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Sean Sampson, to be followed by George Tamayo.
Good evening.
My name is Sean Sampson, and I'm a local cyclist. I've been traveling by bicycle the majority of my life, and just wanted to come and say thank you for all the new changes in the city and the new bike lanes. My current commute cuts through three different city limits, starting in Wildamar, going through Marietta, and ends in Temecula at the Bike Shop on 79 South. So, and as you travel from city to city, it's pretty obvious where the, you know, where the, the city limit line ends and another one begins. Temecula is, you know, has been making a lot of changes, and has certainly made it a lot more bike-friendly than some of the surrounding communities. One of the big controversies and largest impacts, I think, has been on La Serena. There's been a lot of talk about the benefit of it, or the, you know, the negative effects of it. I grew up just off of La Serena, I attended Rancho Elementary School, and there was no bike lane there when I was there in early 90s, and I rode my bike to school every day, and I was, basically, either had to ride on the sidewalk, or cut through the different fields, and, you know, it just wasn't really convenient to get around and, and get to school. So it's, that's certainly made a huge difference. It's also connected Margarita Middle School to, to the community. So, just wanted to say thank you for the new changes, and it, it makes a huge impact. You know, it's, it really does make a difference, so.
Sean, how long does it take you to get from Wildamar to the Bike Shop?
Takes about an hour. It's about 16 miles each way, so.
Well, that's commitment.
Yes.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your very kind words.
Thank you.
The last speaker is George Tamayo.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak before you here tonight. My name is George Tamayo, and I have been a resident of Temecula for just over eight years. As an avid cyclist, I ride between 80 and 100 miles per week, much of that across the city of Temecula. And as a result, I've had many opportunities to experience and consider ways to improve the bicycling infrastructure around town. So let me take this time to commend you on the recent improvements to bike travel, to make bike travel safer and more enjoyable here in town. The sharrows through Old Town, and more recently, the striping improvements along La Serena, are excellent examples of how we can create a system that encourages automotive and bicycle traffic to coexist safely. I urge you to continue developing our cycling infrastructure with more initiatives like these. Look at any quality of life or desirable place to live survey, and the existence of a well-planned and thought-out bicycle a well-planned and thought-out bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure ranks right up with quality schools and low crime rates as factors in attaining high scores. The more we work together on these initiatives, then the better the quality of life for all citizens of Temecula can be assured. And I just want to add that we heard some very lovely words this evening about nice matters and I want to say that nice matters on the roads as well and that the purple and black marks that you get in the case of a collision with a bicycle and, and automobile can be very profound and very painful, not just for the cyclist, but for the family members and friends of those cyclists. So nice matters on the road. Thanks for listening.
Well, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Nigard, the cyclist amongst us?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, first of all, thank you for the, the nice comments. It is seldom that people take time out of their, their evening to come here and give nice comments. Typically, it's complaints, which we are okay to listen to, but I have to tell you, appreciate the council getting praised, but I think it, it would be okay if we pointed out some of Luke's staff who actually made those things happen. While the council may have made those decisions, I think Matt Peters kind of leads the way and he's done a fantastic job in relation to the bikes and Trailways Master Plan. And then also you folks at the Bike Shop and Rick Wessels, you know what, you participated. And so really, you, the, the result is what you participated in and so thank you for participating and, and again, when there's a call to participate in something, here in Temecula, you can get results. So, thank you.
And I can't help but think that Mr. Schwank may have had something to do with this.
Yeah, maybe a little.
Yeah, maybe, you know, our king cyclists. So thank you, Councilmember Nigard. And seeing no further comments, oh, Matt, okay, go ahead. Oh, there you are.
Real quick for comments, I just wanted to let the council know that the, was it Mr. Butler and, and Mr. Adams and, and Ms. Joel and I all attended the League of California Cities, and Mary Ann, sorry, and the mayor, at, what, two weeks ago now? And this is the third meeting I've attended in as many years. And I got to say, hopefully staff agrees, but this was an excellent meeting this year and we have a wonderful new director for the league. And I think the quality of the talks and the type of support that this provides our city and our staff has improved dramatically. And so it's a wonderful organization to be aligned with and glad I had the opportunity to join our folks up in Sacramento for that. And then one other quick item, the RCHCA had its sort of quarterly meeting earlier.
Riverside County Habitat Conservation Authority.
Riverside County Habitat Conservation Authority, dealing with the Stevens Kangaroo Rat. Just wanted to say that, you know, the report back from staff is that the county or the conservation authority is still pursuing the delisting of the kangaroo rat and has significantly ramped up its efforts of sort of communication and lobbying at the state and federal level. So hopefully we'll have more on that soon.
Well, thank you. And I will add that, that in the last two weeks and when we were at the League of California Cities, we were honored to receive the Helen Putnam Award and you've heard us speak about that a little bit, but that is the highest award that you can receive for a project and it was our Economic Development Program for Arts and Culture that received that award. And what that program does is presents opportunities for people to come to Old Town and, and experience art. And we have so many wonderful artists in Temecula, in residents or nearby, and so they can display their art and people come down, look at the art, they walk around Old Town to several locations where the art is shown and we bring in restaurant tours to provide food for people who come to visit. And we know that it does increase the traffic to Old Town, which raises, you know, high tide raises all boats, so people come down and support the merchants of Old Town and get a little arts and culture at the same time. So we were really honored to be recognized for that Helen Putnam Award and brought it home for the residents of Temecula, so. And we did have a great time and I do think, I've been going to these for years and I do think this was absolutely the best one and I know it was one of the best-attended events, you know, what, 1,800, a couple thousand elected officials and city staff members and we get to attend all kinds of workshops and hear about things going on in other cities and we commiserate over legislation that we don't like or legislation that we do like and we're also afforded the opportunity to visit with our assembly persons and senators while we're in Sacramento. So it's a very worthwhile trip and we had a great time. So anybody else in the queue? All right, no one else? In that case, I'm going to move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve the action minutes of September the 5th, 2017. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve the City Treasurers Report as of July 31st, 2017. Number five, adopt ordinance 17-06 to consider the Cypress Rids Residential Project, including a general plan amendment, a planned development overlay, zone change, a tentative track map, and a development plan, planning application numbers PA 15-1894, PA 15-1893, and PA 15-1892. This is the second reading. Number six, adopt ordinance 17-07 to approve the Generations Project, including a development plan and planned development overlay amendment, planning applications number PA 15-1885 and PA 15-1886. This is also a second reading. Number seven, appoint members to the Community Services and Public Traffic Safety Commissions. Number eight, approve meeting schedule for City Council meetings for the month of December 2017. Number nine, approve the purchase of the fiscal year 2017-18 annual maintenance and support services for Tyler Technologies' suite of products. Number 10, approve an increase in the purchase amount of Soft Choice Corporation for Microsoft software licenses. Number 11, approve City of Temecula Fiscal Year 2016-17 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Number 12, approve a funding agreement between the City of Temecula and Riverside County Flood Control and Water Conservation District for cleanup of trash, debris, and other items on district-owned property. Number 13, approve plans and specifications and authorize the solicitation of construction bids for the Fallen Heroes Memorial, PW 17-07. Number 14, establish an always stop control at the intersection of Promenade Chardonnay Hills and Promenade Bordeaux. And I will go back to item number six concerning the Generations Project and I will be abstaining from this, this vote because my property adjoins the property of Linfield Christian School and that is where this project is located. So I'm going to abstain from that one. Any other concerns, Stu?
Yes, I, yeah, item number five, I'd like to have a no vote registered for me. I, I don't need to pull the item, I just want to be consistent with the public hearing and my proposal of that.
All right, so as noted, and I will accept a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor, I want to make a quick comment on item 12.
Okay.
But no need to really pull it, just a quick comment.
All right then, go ahead.
Item 12, we have a funding agreement now between Riverside County Flood Control and the City of Temecula. What does that mean? Is now we can go into the creeks, Temecula Creek, Marietta Creek, which are traditionally owned by Flood Control, now we have their permission. Why would we want to go into the creeks? Is to abate transient homeless campgrounds, which has been a concern of everybody in the city. So now all we have to do is give the proper notice, which I believe is 72 hours.
Yes.
And we post that notice and then we go in and we clean out the campgrounds. It's my goal and my hope that as soon as a, a transient camp pops up, that we're there to abate it three days later, not allowing anybody to camp on public property, period. So I wholeheartedly endorse it, just want to give everybody clarity because I know it's something that the community is very interested in.
All right then, if I could have a motion and a second.
Second.
With the items as noted and my abstention on item number six. So if you go ahead and cast your votes. And registered 5-0 in favor with abstentions and, Stu?
No vote on 5.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
Did you press the wrong button?
No, no, she, she recorded it.
He's fine, his no vote is recorded.
Oh, okay, oh, I'm sorry, so I got you. All right, so then moving on, we will recess this meeting to the meeting of the Temecula Community Services District.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, we're all here. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have general public comments. We have one public comment under item number 16 on consent.
Okay. Then we'll dispense with the, that portion, reading it, and we'll go to the consent calendar. We do have two items. Why don't we go ahead and take item 15 and vote on that one first and then we can take the public speaker on 16. Item 15 is approve the action minutes of September 5th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. We're a little out of sorts here.
I'm trying. There you go.
That motion carries unanimously. Item 16 is approve a sponsorship agreement with Safe Alternatives for Everyone to provide quality services for children, youth, and families. I don't think we need a staff report unless anybody needs it. Okay, then call the speaker, please.
The only speaker is June Early.
Welcome, June, and good evening.
First of all, I'd like to, my name is June Early, I'm the Executive Director of Safe Alternatives for Everyone and I wanted to thank the City of Temecula and City Council for their ongoing support of our agency. I'd also like to invite everyone to our annual meeting where we will be discussing our agency's services and progress that we've had in working with families impacted by domestic violence. Additionally, I wanted to, in line with, we're talking about our teens and youth in the community, our teens and our teen leadership program, they had an opportunity, two of our teens had an opportunity to travel to Houston this past week to help with the Hurricane Harvey efforts through our Police Activities League program. And I will be having them come a little bit later for another council meeting, but our teens were part of teens that came from throughout the United States, from Connecticut, Sacramento, San Mateo, and they all converged in communities to help the family members impacted by Hurricane Harvey. And they were, our teens were freshmen in high school at Temecula Valley High School and they were phenomenal. They were very, very, very helpful with the families and the families impacted wanted to share with the United States that they're so gracious, they're so thankful for the help that we were able to provide and our students gave of their time and committed, and completed community service in Houston. Thank you.
Thank you, June. I'd just like to say, as she's walking back, the, very often on agenda items, we'll ask for a staff report to explain further. In this case, the city and Safe Alternatives for Everyone have been partners in, in an effort to aid domestic violence victims and eradicate domestic violence for, I don't know how, a long time.
Long time.
And so we know each other quite well, so. Okay, with that, anybody like to move the item?
Move approval.
Second.
And please cast your votes.
My fingers broke.
I'll second. For the record, that was Mrs. Edwards' second. How would you like to vote on this item?
I would vote yea.
Okay, are there any opposed?
Yea.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Mr. Hawkins?
Mr. President.
Redominable, Mr. Hawkins.
Oh, my goodness. Just a quick reminder to join us this Saturday here at the Civic Center from 9:00 AM to noon for Temecula's 7th Annual Health and Community Resource Fair. The region's largest health and resource fair will showcase over 100 vendors, providing free health screenings, community resources, emergency preparedness tips, public safety awareness, and a nonprofit expo. Resources will range from health and wellness to special needs to veterans and military services and much, much more. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Kevin. Are we going to get a report on the college fair a little later? The college fair?
I can give you a quick, quick update, Mr. President. We estimated on Saturday, there was probably close to 10,000 folks that attended the Promenade Mall. By show of hands, how many students in the audience made it to the college vocational fair? Fantastic. We had over 250 colleges that included universities, we had all of the military academies there, I think all the UC schools, I think all the CSU's were there. We also had vocational schools and really was an exceptional event. Got to give a lot of credit to Charles Walker, he, he elevates the bar every year. Next year will be our, our 10th year and so we're going to go bigger and better next year, but I know as a, next to Black Friday, it's the busiest day for the Promenade Mall, the second busiest day. So it's turned into an economic development event and we're really pleased to be able to honor, to, to put this on every year, so.
Great, thanks, Erin. While you have the mic, do you have a report?
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do we have any reports from any of our board members? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to the next meeting of October 10th.
Move adjournment.
Second.
Been made and seconded, any opposition? We are adjourned.
All right, then we are going to call this meeting of the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency to order. Let the roll call reflect that members are present. Do we have any public comments for Sarda? None? All right. Then we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number 17, approve the action minutes of September 5th, 2017.
Move item 17?
Second.
And that is unanimous, thank you. So do we have any reports, Executive Director?
Nothing further tonight.
Anyone, board members? None? Then I will accept a motion to adjourn to the meeting of October 10th. Okay, motion and a second and we didn't get anybody, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None? Okay, thank you. And now, we're going to reconvene the Temecula City Council. We have a public hearing, so any person may submit written comments to the City Council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. We have item number 18, amend the capital improvement program budget for fiscal years So could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, and good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. The item before you, as, as you mentioned, is to amend the city's capital improvement program budget for fiscal years 2018 through 2022. The reason for this amendment is due to the passage of Senate Bill 1, also known as SB1. That bill was called the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. It was passed by the California Legislature and signed by the governor in April of 2017. It included an increase in the gasoline excise tax, as well as an increase in vehicle license fees and an increase in the diesel fuel tax, as well as a fee for electric vehicles who use the roads in California. And as noted on the slide, the gas tax increase takes effect on November 1st of 2017. The funding package from that bill provided funds for several different transportation programs benefiting roads throughout the state of California, including what's known as the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account, which is what we'll be discussing. But in addition to funding for that particular program, the City of Temecula also is benefiting from funding that will be allocated from this bill for a few other fairly significant programs. Of one of those, which was just recently approved by the Riverside County Transportation Commission, is to allocate the funding for our French Valley Parkway Interchange Project, the Phase 2 portion of that project. That funding will come through the State Transportation Improvement Program, which will receive the funds from this SB1 bill. That is going to provide approximately $47 million through that STIP program for the French Valley Interchange Project. So the- So, the city will be a major benefactor from this bill that passes through that program for the French Valley Interchange Project. Another project that will also be receiving funds through what's known as the Active Transportation Program is our San Grotudas Creek Bike Trail Project, which will connect the bike trail along San Grotudas Creek from where it ends right now to Nez Road, all the way over to Marietta Creek, so under the freeway, and crossing underneath Jefferson Avenue and connecting to Marietta Creek. So, we'll be receiving funds through this SB One program for some fairly significant projects in the city, in addition to these road maintenance projects, which we're discussing here this evening. One of the requirements of the bill is that the California Transportation Commission requires a list of projects that will be receiving these funds from the bill submitted to the CTC by October sixteenth of two thousand seventeen, and that list needs to be included in the city's capital improvement program, which is why we're recommending the amendments to the budget here this evening. What we intend to do with those funds is we intend to supplement our pavement rehabilitation program with the use of the SB One funds. And we are proposing to amend our CIP program to incorporate the list of projects that will be funded and will be rehabilitated within our city. We are in the process of updating our overall pavement management program, and I know one of the speakers earlier had referenced an evaluation of the roads in the Meadowview community. We are actually in the process of evaluating all of our roads throughout the city and re-establishing the index, the condition index of those roads, and then we'll be reprioritizing our overall citywide pavement management or pavement rehabilitation program. That study is going on right now, and we expect to have the results of that study by the end of the calendar year here by December of this year. What we have before you this evening is a list of roads that we know need to be worked on, that have been on previous pavement rehabilitation priority lists, and what staff knows are some of the higher priority roads throughout the city. And we're presenting that list here to you this evening because of the fact that we have to submit that to the CTC by October sixteenth. The amount of funding that will be available for the pavement rehabilitation program that we've received estimates on is for the first year, the seventeen eighteen fiscal year, because of the fact that the tax doesn't go into effect until November, the amount we'll be receiving for that fiscal year is approximately six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, and the amount for fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen will be approximately one point eight one eight million dollars. And that's the amount that we will be receiving on an annual basis then going forward. So, as I mentioned, we were required to submit a list of projects to the CTC by October sixteenth of this year, and then annually, we'll be required to submit that same list to the CTC. The list must include a description of the project, the specific street name, the terminus of the project, the proposed schedule, and the estimated useful life of the project that we are using those funds for. The guidelines do, however, allow us to make changes to the list of projects that we submit that was also included in the legislation that was passed. And another portion of the legislation is that there is a required maintenance of effort, so the city will be required to continue spending general fund dollars on transportation, maintenance, and transportation improvements consistent with the amounts that were spent during the two thousand nine, ten, ten eleven, and eleven twelve fiscal years. And we are required to report that to the CTC as well. So, the list of projects that we're proposing to include in the CIP budget, as you can see before you, for fiscal years two thousand seventeen eighteen, is to do pavement rehabilitation on Rancho California Road from Jefferson to the western city limits, Winchester Road between Nicholas and the eastern city limits, Inez Road between Winchester and Date Street, and Equity Drive, and County Center Loop Drive, rehabilitating both of those roads. For fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen, we would be including the Meadowview Loop, which includes Villa Norte and Del Ray Road, Rancho Way from Business Park Drive to Diaz Road, and the Business Park Drive Loop. And for fiscal years nineteen twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty-one twenty-two, you can see the roads that would be included in those fiscal years. And again, because these are these out years of the programs, these are really just projections and estimates of the roads that we would be conducting rehabilitation on during those fiscal years. So, that concludes the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Jeff?
Yeah, Pat, that list that you just showed.
Hold on one second, Mary Ann. I was just informed by council I have to leave because my road is listed on the agenda.
All right, so, adios.
Okay.
We'll call you when we're finished. Go ahead.
We'll give him a minute to leave.
He's not listening.
The list that you just showed us of the projects in those various years, I'm assuming that that list was created based on our own knowledge of the need and the timing of those needs. So, those on the outer years are less critical today than those in the first year and the second year and the like. Okay, and just to be clear, too, what we're doing tonight is approving that list to be submitted. We're not voting tonight on actually issuing a bid and.
No, this is just the list that we would submit to the CTC. We would then be bidding each of these projects individually as we were to construct the projects.
In the years that you showed us.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? None? All right, oh, Mr. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, just a point of clarification. This item tonight is only about Senate Bill One funding, as the council knows, but maybe the audience doesn't know, there are other roads that will get planned and reprioritized every year as we go through our capital improvement program. So, once the analysis is done, we will reprioritize in different colors of money, general fund money, Measure S money, that will also go into. So, that wasn't a comprehensive list of every road that's going to be done over the next five years. That was just a small segment of Senate Bill One funds. Just wanted to make that point.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. And seeing no other questions, then I know we have public comments, so then I will go ahead and open the public hearing, and if we could have our first speaker. And I recognize this name.
The first speaker is Paul Oglesby, to be followed by Bob Grebe.
It's Oglesby. I knew that. Maybe it was a problem with your handwriting, Paul.
Oh, come on.
How are you?
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Paul Oglesby. I have been a resident of Temecula for thirty-three years, and a resident of Meadowview for thirty-two years, and as Mary Ann knows, I was a school administrator at Temecula Valley High School for ten years. My wife and I are both retired. We raised our children here in this town, and we continue to live here despite the fact that my daughter in Seattle wants me to move to Seattle. Meadowview roads are substandard. And in the thirty-two years that I've lived in Meadowview, I think I saw some slurry go on once. And the entire time, I lived near the corner of Solano and Del Ray on Villa Corsca, nine houses on a cul-de-sac. The roads are falling apart. You're going to see people bring pieces of the roads up here today. They're substandard, yet I see on the list that you showed that there are roads that were built, didn't even exist when I moved here, that are being fixed beforehand. Meadowview is used as a shortcut for people going to the mall, people going to the schools, the churches. We have a problem with people speeding through Meadowview. You really need to look at all the roads in Meadowview. So, when you get out and do that survey, try taking the side streets, drive down San Pasqual, drive down some of these other streets. I just happened to walk out yesterday and think, look down and go, what a patchwork. I mean, this is, my street, which doesn't have a lot of traffic on it, looks horrible. So, I appreciate the fact that you're going to redo the loop. That's only part of it. The substandard roads need to be brought up to standard for the entire section of Meadowview. We're one of the oldest parts of Temecula. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
The next speaker is Bob Grebe, to be followed by Patrice Lines.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm like the previous speaker, I want to talk to you about the Meadowview roads. My name is Bob Grebe, and I've lived in Temecula for sixteen years, and I've lived on one of the side streets of Meadowview. And to the best of my knowledge, they've never been slurred, and they're really in bad condition. There's a group of us that walk every morning in Meadowview on the side streets, and I can tell you they're a mess, okay? I contacted the city last July when there was a brochure that was put out that showed some of the funding that Temecula had received in some of the areas that they were going to slurry. And when I contacted the city, they said that the reason that some of those, Temecula wasn't going to be slurred, those were streets that were in better condition than the ones in Meadowview and would cost less money to bring up to standard. I was also told that those roads were originally put in by county, and they weren't up to the standards of the city, and they would require more money in order to bring them up to standard. And I appreciate the fact that you're doing Del Ray and Villa Norte, they're on the schedule, but the side roads are really bad. So, I would implore you to look at them and give it some consideration because we're badly in need of attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grebe.
The next speaker is Patrice Lines, to be followed by Ted Carley.
Hi, Patrice.
Hi, I'm Patrice Lines, and I'm a resident of Temecula and a resident of Meadowview for twenty-eight years. Is the overhead working?
Uh-huh.
Those are chunks from my street, San Pasqual Road in Temecula, in Meadowview, and I would like to say that most of Meadowview is the same. Just a second. As you can see, the sizes vary from very small to quite large. The street's falling apart. We're actually having lots of difficulty. It's very dangerous. It's just debilitated. We have weeds growing out through the holes, and we get caught in the holes when we're doing our daily walks. So, I would really appreciate, I know you haven't concluded your study, but I don't think we have five years left on these streets. I would really appreciate your attention as soon as possible. I have read the Pavement Condition Index, and I feel that our streets qualify for every category on this pavement index. So, we are in dire need and desperately seeking your help and that funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ted Carley, to be followed by Mike Beal. Ted Carley, to be followed by Michael Beal, or Mike Beal.
He might have gotten swept up in the high school students that are leaving. Ah, there he is.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for letting us talk a little bit. My name's Ted Carley. I, like them, live in Meadowview. All I can do is reinforce everything they said. They've got all my notes down. But the one thing that I do want to say is, I heard here tonight from Patrick that, I looked at some of the numbers he's throwing at us, you're not even going to look at our side streets for four, five more years. It's so bad right now that a couple more years, it'll take a four-wheel drive to get in and out of our driveways. It's getting terrible. And there's chuck holes, and the street's falling apart, and she just brought in little pieces of the street, but it's dangerous. We talked to people that, we walk in the morning, we talk to people that ride bikes that would like to roller skate and can't even think about roller skating because it's too dangerous. And like Sally said, we have no sidewalks, you know? We have no sewers, we have no natural gas, and we're paying the same taxes as everybody else. We really feel, and I've been there fifteen years, and my street has never been slurred in fifteen years, that the city should make a little bit of a priority in that whole development. There's nine hundred homeowners, and they're not happy people. I'm sorry, there's not as many that probably should have been here tonight, but getting the message out is not easy nowadays. Thank you.
So, Mr. Carley, just to clarify, your street will be, it's part of the survey that's being done now.
No, he's talking about the racetrack. I call it the racetrack, excuse me. Del Ray and Del Nordi, that's the circle around Meadowview.
No, I know that, but we're talking about two separate things. That, what you, the list you saw, those streets are being considered for that special SB One funding. There are other streets, including the side streets in Meadowview, that will be surveyed along with all the other streets in towns. Right now, it's being done.
Right, yeah, our. Regular funding that we use every year.
Right, and then the city will be funding the improvements on those streets.
And then those surveys, after they're done, how long of a period of time before they're done?
Well, we'll be, we'll be bringing that report back to the council with recommendations for priorities, once we have the rankings of all the streets there being, we're surveying all the streets throughout the whole city, and we'll be, bring those back to the council with recommendations for prioritization of the entire network throughout the city.
So, we will see that list of streets and prioritization of those streets, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The final speaker is Mike Beal.
Mr. Beal, good evening.
Good evening. Those of you who know me know that will be happy to know I'm going to stick to script.
Well, thank you.
Okay. My name is Mike Beal. My wife Cheryl and I have lived in Temecula since nineteen eighty-eight. We taught at all three public high schools for twenty years. We started youth basketball leagues, designed the TBS logo, took a twenty thousand dollar pay cut to come here, and have never regretted it. We have spent countless hours volunteering and donating significant amounts to other volunteer projects, like Dollar for Scholars, with an ongoing first responder scholarship. And I mention these things because our background is not unusual among our Meadowview neighbors. I guess we all just appreciate Temecula that much. We were the groundbreakers. When the city asked, we responded, and we were glad to do so. Back in eighty-nine, I even wrote a column in the paper when we became a city and voted on the name. I playfully suggested that we take the mech out of Temecula, insert the ranch from Rancho to name our city Tarantula.
I remember that.
We had something and wanted to ensure slow growth of our little paradise. I must admit, though, that with the leadership of the people, like you, on the council and dedication and commitment of our administrative management and staff, a steroid-like growth has been met with professional solutions to the ever-mounding challenges of progress. As a current Secretary of the Meadowview Homeowners Association, we have been inundated by complaints about the streets. Might insert at this point that as soon as you start doing something good for other people in town, it becomes obvious that it only, at that point, led up to Meadowview. I tempered, let's see, I called the mayor after pulling weeds out of the middle of the street in front of our house. I tempered my frustration and tried to tie it to the neighborhood concerns by referring to a grassroots movement and a ground swell. I received immediate, complete, and projected timelines for action from Mary Ann Edwards and Assistant City Manager Butler. While this was deeply appreciated, it seemed our streets could not be cured with a simple slurry. So much time had passed that major preparation would have to occur first, and those timelines were just too vague. Like library books, heavy penalties always accompany anything long overdue. We, the groundbreakers, have grounds breaking all around us. At one point, Meadowview controlled the election of city council. We can still make a considerable impact if we put our minds to it, and we all seem to be behind this central issue. I wrote a novel that starts and ends in Meadowview. It describes Temecula as an idyllic community. You have a tremendous group of people in Meadowview who have been there for you and the city over the past quarter century. We only ask that you be there for us. I've always been told that the road to hell is paved with good intention. The roads in Meadowview look like hell, and we hope that next year, you will see, we will see more from you than simply good intentions. Thank you. And Avenida Barca has to be included in the loop plans. That would just be mine. Now, I will make one, I told you I'd catch up with you.
Yes, you did.
And I told you I had something. Now, I feel like I'm in front of Judge Judy. May I approach the bench?
Oh, my goodness, with police officers, are you in the back of the room? Yes, you may approach the bench.
This is a little presentation that is probably not going to make it to your trophy case, but I think you'll find a spot in your house for it. This is from my wife and I. You're the first person outside of our friends and colleagues and coworkers that have received this.
Oh, my goodness.
So, and you deserve it.
Is it a chunk of street? Is it a chunk of street? Well, it comes with its own Crayola, so I like that. Oh, man, this is wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. All right. So, any further comments? None? So, it's still in public hearing, so I'm going to say comments going once, comments going twice, anyone that wanted to speak. All right, then we can close the public hearing. And council members, do you have comments?
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second for staff recommendation. And votes are cast. And that is four ayes with Councilmember Stewart exiled to the back room where he will be fetched right now. So, thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, everyone, for your comments. All right. Then we can move on to item number 19, City Council Business. Introduce ordinance pertaining to electric vehicle charging stations and expedited permitting procedures. So, can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, very briefly, before you tonight is the expedited permitting ordinance for electric vehicle charging stations. AB 1236 amended the California Government Code to require every city and county with a population of 200,000 or fewer residents to adopt an ordinance by September 30th, 2017 that creates an expedited streamlined permitting process for electric vehicle charging stations. AB 1236 requires that a jurisdiction adopt a checklist of requirements for which a permit application for an electric vehicle charging station will be eligible for expedited review. The city currently already expedites the review of such applications by reviewing and issuing permits within a maximum of five days or over the calendar with an appointment. Therefore, the city's current process already substantially expedites the review of electric vehicle charging stations and the State Office of Planning and Research has developed a checklist for electrical vehicle charging stations and the city will place that checklist online and utilize it in all future permit reviews. Because the city is required to adopt an ordinance requiring the expedited review of electrical vehicle charging stations by September 30th, 2017, the ordinance is presented as an urgency ordinance. So with that, staff recommends the city council adopt an ordinance, an urgency ordinance adopting Chapter 15.24, Title 15, Buildings and Construction of the Temecula Municipal Code, establishing an expedited building permit process for electrical vehicle charging stations. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Luke. Are there any questions? Matt?
Just one quick question. You said this is urgency because of the timeline that legislature ended this month.
That's correct.
This doesn't require a second reading at all?
The urgency ordinance would mean that this ordinance takes effect immediately.
Immediately. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, if I may clarify, so there was two actions tonight. One action is to adopt by four-fifths vote, by urgency, and we're also doing first reading of the ordinance. So you will see second reading of this ordinance by consent at the next meeting.
Oh, all right.
So we'll take two separate motions on that.
Okay.
First is the urgency, then the second one is the regular.
All right. So then I will accept and.
Move 19.1, introduction of the urgency.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second and we will vote on that one.
Are there no comments? Were there public comments?
There were no public comments.
All right. And then we will take a motion and for item 19.2?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, you're going to have to take the second motion by voice vote.
Okay, so 19.2 and we'll do it by voice.
Move 19.2.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? All right, thank you. And.
May I read the title?
You may go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I'll be reading by Title Ordinance Number 17, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula Adding Chapter 15.24 to Title 15, Buildings and Construction of the Temecula Municipal Code, Establishing an Expedited Building Permit Process for Electric Vehicle Charging Stations. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we can move ahead to item number 20. Introduce ordinance amending Section 10.28.010D of the Temecula Municipal Code Regarding Prima Facia Speed Limits on Certain Streets. So could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. As you mentioned, we will be discussing the establishment of the prima facie speed limits on city streets. As a way of background, the California Vehicle Code requires that our speed limits be reviewed at least every seven years in order to be enforceable. The new speed limits must be established on the basis of an engineering and traffic survey and the factors to be considered in that survey include the consideration of the prevailing speed or the 85th percentile speed, the accident statistics or accident history on the street, and any roadway characteristics not readily apparent to motorists. Our recent engineering and traffic surveys were conducted by our consulting engineer, Willdan Engineering. They studied a total of 30 arterial roads and 40 street segments on those 30 roads. The surveys indicated that the majority of the streets in those surveys do not require any changes to the currently posted speed limits and those speed limits are indicated on the table that was attached to your staff report. There were a few streets that the surveys indicated the speed limits would need to be increased and a few that the limits would need to be decreased, and I have those for you here on the next few slides. The streets that were recommending an increase in the speed limit, Channel Street between Butterfield Stage and Chote Street from 30 to 35 miles an hour, Royal Burke Dale Drive from Temecue Drive to Meadows Parkway from 25 to 30 miles an hour, those are recommended to increase. The streets based on the surveys that would be recommending a decrease in the speed limits, one would be Avenida Barca between Del Rey and Margarita Road from 35 to 30, Solana Way between Margarita Road and Del Rey from 45 to 40, and Vallejo Avenue between Santiago and Cabrillo Avenue from 30 to 25 mile an hour. And the reason for this decrease is that Vallejo was qualified as a residential street, which then justifies the 25 mile an hour prima facia for residential zones. So we've got a few streets that are being posted with speed limits for the first time. These include El Chismo Road at 40 miles an hour, Pachanga Road 35 miles an hour, Rancho Way at 35 miles an hour, and Villa Las Colinas 25 miles an hour. Those all were based on the surveys that were conducted on those streets. The Public Traffic Safety Commission considered this item on August 24th and recommended approval of the ordinance amending Section 10.28.010, Speed Limits on Certain Streets of the Temecula Municipal Code, at a vote of four in favor and one absent. That concludes the staff report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? None? All right. Comments? None? Then I'll accept a motion.
Move, we introduce ordinance number 17, next.
Second.
All right. So buttons are working.
Madam Mayor, for the record, there were no public comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. There it goes. And we have 5-0 in favor. Thank you very much. Moving on, number 21.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
Do you have to do that one, too?
Yes.
You may.
My apologies.
That's okay.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula amending Section 10.28.010D of the Temecula Municipal Code Regarding Prima Facia Speed Limits on Certain Streets. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, moving on to 21. Consider the creation of a citizen advisory group for redistricting purposes related to the 2020 census. And could we have a staff report on this one, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. At the July 25th meeting, the city council directed staff to research and bring back an item for council consideration related to community engagement and future redistricting efforts. Specifically, the discussion at that meeting included references to the creation of a citizen advisory group and/or commission. The next census occurs in 2020. Based on the current Census Bureau schedule, the results from the 2020 census are expected on March 31st, 2021. The council will need to approve the adjusted boundaries by November 1st, 2021. After this effort, the city will not need to redistrict again until November 2031. The California Citizens Redistricting Commission was referenced in the July 25th discussion. The state commission example is not directly applicable to cities because the commission was created and its powers delegated through statewide voter initiatives, specifically Proposition 11 and Proposition 20. The commission is responsible for final determination of the Senate, Assembly, Board of Equalization, and state congressional district boundaries, and the membership is based on partisan affiliation. Cities are nonpartisan and hold legislative approval of district boundaries in the elections code itself. With respect to direct city application, staff researched and analyzed information provided by the California Local Redistricting Project. Based on the project's online database, only 23 cities have created some form of a citizens redistricting group. Of these 23, 13 are advisory in nature, six are independent, and four are a hybrid. Of the 23, 13 have an acting authority through their charter and four were created based on CBRA settlement and/or litigation. Also, of the 23, only 14 are permanent versus one-time only, and of those 14, 13 are the charter cities. The only exception is Escondido, which entered into a CBRA-related settlement. Given this information, Temecula is somewhat in our charter territory. There does not appear to be any general law cities that have formed permanent citizen redistricting groups without a CBRA settlement connection. A listserv inquiry produced a similar result. Staff also had a meeting with Mr. Robinson, who provided significant public comment on the districting process earlier in the year, to obtain his thoughts on criteria for a potential citizen advisory group for redistricting, should the council desire to pursue one. As such, the following three options are available for future redistricting efforts at this time for the council. Number one, direct the staff to conduct a citywide community engagement effort on its own, similar to previous efforts associated with identifying the community priorities that we did in the previous two years. Workshops in each district, utilize social media, partner with the school district, et cetera. Staff would specifically reach out to protected class stakeholders and communities of interest for input, and workshops in each district would educate and engage the citizenry on the line drawing process with the assistance of a professional demographer. This effort will likely take one year. Number two, direct staff to conduct a citywide community engagement effort utilizing the assistance of a citizens advisory group. If the council desires this option, it is recommended that the advisory group consist of five members, one member from each district. It is also recommended that the three of the five members represent protected classes as identified in the census, to the extent possible. The remaining two members would represent communities of interest at staff discretion, in addition to their respective district. And to the extent possible, the group would also be reflective of the city's demographics. The group would be advisory in nature and the city council would retain legislative approval authority of adjusted boundaries. The city would still utilize the services of a professional demographer to draw the lines. Said group would be activated approximately one year prior to each decennial census. And finally, the third option is to direct the staff otherwise based on council discussion tonight. That concludes staff's report and I'm happy to answer any questions and we do have three speakers on this item.
All right. Are there any questions of staff at this point? None? None? All right, then let's go ahead and open the public hearing and could we have the first speaker, please?
The first speaker is David Maddox to be followed by Martha Howard.
David Maddox. I have not seen you since you were in middle school. How are you?
Doing well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to encourage you to move forward with option number two in the staff report, which is to establish a temporary commission.
Speak into the microphone, David.
Oh, yes, sorry about that.
Thanks.
Your directive to staff was to address the issue of community engagement. A citizens advisory group would certainly be able to help with that, just in terms of extra manpower. Also, if you look at what citizens like Martha and Ira Robinson brought to the table this last go-around, I think Ira especially has essentially acted as a de facto advisor already. And I think if you formalize that role and also expand it into a demographically and geographically diverse committee, you might dramatically improve the quality of the feedback you receive on the next round of redistricting. Also, on the subject of community engagement, this might be getting a little bit ahead of the decision you're being asked to make tonight, but I thought it might be helpful to see some specific examples of what that engagement could look like in 2021. So, one thing I'd love to see next time, in particular, are public participation kits, and I'll show you what I mean over on the projector, if I may.
Sure.
All right. So here's a one-page map kit, which the city of Vista used during its districting process this year. These were made available online at drawvista.org and they were also distributed at community workshops. They're very simple. You just color in the census blocks, using one color for each district. The population subtotals are written right inside each block and it's very easy, so anyone can participate. Here's a snapshot of a more detailed map kit, also distributed in the city of Vista. This one includes an Excel spreadsheet file so that you can see exactly how various protected interest groups are affected as you draw the map. I should also mention that these kits were created by demographer Doug Johnson, who you'll recall worked with Temecula on our own districting process. And here you can see just a list of some of the public feedback that was generated using these kits. In addition to the three candidate maps provided by the professional demographer, there were also dozens of public submissions that met the legal requirements for map adoption. So these are just a few examples, but for now, I'll summarize by saying that I think you're going to see a lot more interest on this issue in 2021 and a citizens advisory group could really help cultivate and also distill all of that public information or public input for you. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, David.
The next speaker is Martha Howard to be followed by Ira Robinson.
Hi, Martha.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, council members, and supporting staff. My name is Martha Howard and I'm the founder of the Latina Association of Riverside County. I want to commend you, oops, this time I.
There you go.
I want to commend you all for bringing this to the agenda tonight specifically because you made that motion, if I'm not wrong, my memory serves me well. Thank you so much because this is a very important event. This body of legislation is very proud of getting the community involved. And so basically, as I read the agenda, I'm respectfully requesting that you support option two, which is a citizen commission. As it is stated already in the agenda, to form five members, citizen advisory commission of these three to represent each a protected class, Latino, Asian, African-American. The remaining two members, which represent communities in their own districts. The advisory commission will have full input in drawing the district's maps, assisted by a professional demographer. And lastly, this is my very, very personal comment, too, is that I'm here tonight because I strongly believe that we belong in this community and should participate in drawing the district maps' boundaries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the final speaker is Ira Robinson.
Mr. Robinson, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I don't have a great deal to say. I submitted my comments in writing, so I only really have two things to say. One is I strongly support the second option, which is the creation of a citizens advisory group, with the hope that that group is one that maximizes the participation of members of protected classes. That is, after all, what this law is drafted for. That's all it's drafted to do, is to protect designated classes. And as you look at it, I hope that you will remember that this is not something that is usually of general application. This is a specific application to protected classes. Everything else is in my writing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ira. All right. Any questions? Any comments? I saw Mike pushing buttons. There we go. Go ahead, Mike.
Well, a few things. Where shall we start? First, I think an item like this is premature. Since it is not needed till 2021, it probably would benefit the city greater that a council in session closer to 2021 made that decision. It's also premature because this same council asked staff to come back with a number of policies to consider to. policies to consider to literally remove the dividing lines between districts, so that the only thing that the districts did was to be copacetic with the Voting Rights Act. So, it was just a matter about being in compliance with the Voting Rights Act, but we did not want to set up lines that divided the community, and asked our staff to come back with policies. So, it's premature for the first reason I told you. It's also premature because I'd like to see what those policies entail, what we decide to do, because that may influence what type of citizen group or participation that may come. I have to say, I understand the reason to bring up things like protective class. I understand the reason why we say things that we have to have a citizen committee, five, or at least it's recommended, and three of those be from a protective class. And I just am uncomfortable with starting to focus on race, just me personally. We've never thought about race here, we've never thought about disenfranchised voters, it's never been a problem. We said that when we adopted the districts, and we said that we didn't want to really have the city divided in that manner, but we also realized that there's a movement out there that required us to comply. But we were standoffish to it. We only did it because we have to comply. I'm a little concerned that by implementing something like option 2, we're actually running to and embracing that divisiveness, and embracing the disparity between race. It just bothers me, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. Certainly, well, you never know, but based on how this has been presented, just how it's evolved over the last few years, not just in Temecula but everywhere else, it seems like race has been the issue, and that those that may be on the advisory committee may have a propensity to represent their race. Maybe not, but it would seem that the propensity would be there. So, we're running, it seems there's a problem with maybe running in a direction which I think we aforementioned said we did not want to go. The other issue, and I think my last issue here, let me just look at my notes here. Bear with me a second, I can't read my own writing. Regarding an advisory group, option 2, I have strong feelings that the advisory group representing the citizens of Temecula is the city council of Temecula. That's what we're here for, that's what we're elected to do. If we needed an advisory group, we have a planning commission. If we wanted to take it the next level down, we have a community services commission. But, having said all that, I have absolutely no problem doing community outreach, doing charrettes, going out to all the districts, taking feedback, listening to people, having dialogue, having community forums, that's all good, healthy, and appropriate, and then their duly-elected council member make the decisions in which they were elected to make. So, I guess, having said all that, my recommendation, but certainly want to listen to my colleagues, is this is probably something we don't need to deal with until perhaps 2020 or early 2021, when it's actually there, and who knows what the scenario or what the situation is or what it looks like in 2021. That's four years from now. And lastly, any decision we make today, a future council could overturn anyway. So, I just think it's premature.
All right. I did not notice anyone else in the queue.
Jeff is next.
Jeff, yeah.
Everyone's in the queue.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anybody.
Well, fix that.
What? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. An awful lot of what Mr. Nigard said, I agree with, in particular, the notion that this is premature. None of us know what the makeup of this council is going to be in 2020, except that I can say with some measure of certainty, it probably won't include me. And I know that if I was elected subsequent to this time, let's say in 2018 or 2020, and I'm sitting up here new, and I have to live with decisions that were made prematurely by somebody else, wouldn't sit very well. In fact, we've often talked about the legality of encumbering future councils or the illegality. I'm not sure that applies in this case, it may, but certainly it would be inappropriate in my mind. There's no rush here at all, and I think we're far better off waiting to see what the makeup of the council is, and frankly, what the makeup of our engaged citizenry are. It may be very different than it is today. And the other issue between, eventually, when this is voted on, whether it's tonight or a couple of years from now, looking at options 1 and options 2, it would seem to me that if we're going to really engage the community, and that's the idea, and I heartily support that, then we want to engage as many people as we possibly can. I just don't, an advisory group seems to be superfluous to me, if that's the case. And with all due respect to the speakers, and I do appreciate it, I don't want one member of the Hispanic community on the group that's making these decisions, or at least advising on these decisions. I want 10 or 100, no matter what group that is, whether it's African-Americans, Hispanics, Asians, I'm Jewish, I don't see my group represented. It should include absolutely everybody who wants to be engaged in the process. If we don't do that, I don't think we're doing a service to our citizens, and how they want to see districts drawn, and how they want to vote, ultimately. So, I have a hard time understanding why we're doing this now. I think it's a great discussion, I think it sets the tone for what likely needs to come sometime in the future, and I'm not going to make a motion, as with Mr. Nigard, let's hear from everybody, but I'm inclined to move that we delay this until a time that's more appropriate.
Member Stewart.
Yes. I couldn't agree with you guys more. I mean, I do totally believe that it is a little premature, and I do believe that citywide involvement through outreach, our staff is very capable of doing that, and to engage the community and all the other ethnic groups that need to be represented. I think we'll be totally fine in-house doing that, and I think we'll get plenty of feedback to know exactly where these, and just based on this last drawing, we're going to rely on demographers to create these lines mostly. So, I mean, because it is racially-based, so there's not a whole lot of movement we can do with these lines, based on the law that was set before us. So, I agree, I think it's something we should just table for now.
Matt?
I guess I couldn't disagree more with the last three folks that spoke. And, I mean, I guess, here's where I'm coming from. I mean, I know we were divided on the map that was adopted, right, and that was part of our issue and discussion last time, but don't, and I think, Mike, you had said that we only did this because we have to comply. I don't think that speaks for all of us. You know, a lot of us, or at least myself in particular, thought, you know, that there's a reason why the CBRA is in effect, and a reason why maybe the concept of districts is concerned, because we've always had that, you know, sort of at-large feel, and I know we wanted to preserve the intent of at-large, but there's also value in what this provides, especially for protected classes. So, don't, just to be clear, don't confuse my vote against, or no vote for districting last time, that it was opposed to districts, but rather opposed to the map of choice, right? But, to follow up, though, I think, you know, Jeff, you said something interesting, which is, you know, decisions can always be, we don't want to bind the hands of future council. But I think there's an important message that we have an opportunity to send to future council, which is, you know, we recognize the importance of engaging our community, but more specifically, and like Mr. Robinson said, the protected class, because that's what this is all about, right? So, we have an opportunity to sort of set that tone. And quite frankly, you know, years from now, when this, you know, program might be engaged, the council at that time, at their discretion, can either reject anything we put into place right now, and chart their own path, or, you know, adopt the concept that's in front of us today. So, I guess, you know, at the end of the day, what are we trying to accomplish here? I think personally, again, it's a statement by this council to show that we want to encourage and engage the citizenry, but especially the protected classes, right? Because that was kind of the whole concept, and I understand the idea that, you know, while our residents and folks have always been engaged with our city, but having an advisory, or at least, you know, whatever we want to call this group, having them engaged with us means, you know, a couple of things from my perspective. One is, I think Ms. Minkler and Mr. Robinson probably have the best pulse on, you know, their community and members of our city, and are probably able to engage them in a different way than we as the city or city staff can. So, I think there's value in making sure that, you know, in the next few years, you know, we contact you again and bring you back to the table, because I think there's value in that. But, you know, my understanding in all of this is that the focus really is back to making sure that there's representation at the table with the city in its future evaluation of districts, and making sure that we bring those protected classes to the table. And I think part of what I'm seeing in the staff report provided by Ms. Joel is that, you know, there's, you know, recommendation of members representing protected classes identified in the census, to the extent possible. So, you know, those protected classes, that definition can change over time, and I think we're not necessarily binding the hands of a future council by saying it must be Latino organizations or whatever, you know? We're not saying that, we're saying we're looking for representation as defined under CBRA and the state of California for protected class. So, you know, I guess I don't have as much consternation over this, because this has sort of been the Temecula way, and in a lot of our efforts to engage folks in our community and make sure that, you know, there's a fair and, I think, robust voice out there. And in my mind, all this does is helps to make sure that that's the case. Last thing I'd say, too, is it's, I guess it's a little unfortunate, because everybody's saying that it's premature to do this, but we actually asked staff to provide us with this recommendation during our hearing, and so I, you know, this is why I was looking forward to having this conversation, I thought it was going to play out slightly differently, but we asked for this at the meeting, and this was echoed by multiple folks sitting here at the dais. So, I'm sort of surprised that now we're saying, oh, no, never mind, because my attitude is, no, I still want to have this conversation, I still want to see one, some version of, you know, sort of recommendation one or two. If we haven't landed on quite the right thing here in this, either we, you know, try and resolve that today, or at least bring it back in a relative short period of time, because I'd say, waiting, again, it's an opportunity for us, looking through the districting process, looking through what we went through during those meetings and that dialogue and discussion, and really, you know, well over the last year, it's an opportunity for us to sort of set a tone of what we think this should look like moving into the future. So, happy to continue this, but those are my initial thoughts on this.
Jeff?
Yeah. Matt, I mean, I certainly respect what you're saying, and there's a lot of validity in it. This is one of those times where there really isn't a whole lot of right and wrong, it's just a matter of opinion, and everybody's opinion is valid. And I think there is certainly merit in bringing it up for discussion. Because if you mention that we want to send a message to future councils, I think that's valid, too. But I think by virtue of this discussion and it being on the record, we're doing that. I don't necessarily think we have to bring it to a conclusion tonight, we're still sending that message. From what we're hearing, I don't think there's anybody up here, we haven't heard from you, Madam Mayor, yet, but I'll surmise, I don't think there's anybody that doesn't want to see full community involvement in how this works down the road. It's just a matter of what the mechanism is and what it looks like. And Matt, one thing you said, I think it's great in theory, but in practice, it doesn't work very well, and that's the idea of a future council overturning what we do tonight, if we were to do anything, and institute something different. It's very, very difficult to sit up here when something is already in place, and look people in the eye and say, I know you were happy with that, but I'm going to change it. Doesn't happen very often, and that's unfortunate, because it should if it's warranted, but the politics of the matter tend to infringe on that. And we've, I'll say it happened too many times, it's, there's a saying that's fashionable right now about what goes on the whiteboard doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen in practice, and I think this is one of those times. So, again, I want to see as much participation from the community as possible, and I think option 1 does that, and I reiterate that, there's just, it's different to look to approve something far out when there's a really solid reason to do that, but there is no solid reason here, other than I do agree with sending that message, I do agree with that, but I think we're doing that. And I encourage, I think we all do, more conversation, let's get it all out tonight, whatever everybody's opinion is.
Mike?
Yeah, just a couple more thoughts. I think we voted on the district issue, maybe, what, 60 days ago? And I know tensions were high. I don't want to speak for anybody, but I'm pretty certain everybody was in somewhat disagreement that districts weren't very good for the city of Temecula, however, we had an obligation to go to them because of circumstances that were occurring at the time. Matt, I don't want to speak for you, maybe for districts all along, I don't know. Based on my conversations with you, I don't think that's the case, but I do not want to speak for you. But as 60 days have gone by, you can see it's kind of played itself out, now there's some different thoughts, we're taking a chance to think it through, and I think that evening, I think we also agreed as a council, for another issue to be brought back by staff, and that was a set of policies that actually minimized the impact of districting. And so, the council was pretty clear, we wanted to see policies that minimized the impact of districting, and focusing only on the aspect that we had to comply with under the law, which was the Voting Rights Act. So, when we look at it from that point of view, then the next thing we look at is, in all of these cases, a demographer is going to be brought on board. He was brought on board this time, he'll be brought on board that time, and the classes that are designated at the time to be protected will be protected, just like they were this time. And however we drew the lines this time, there was very little deviation from the protected classes. In other words, I think most of them had, I think we're shooting for, what was it, 25%? We couldn't make that in any of the districts, I think some had 22, several had 21. Bottom line was, it was insignificant. And so, I say, when I said at the time, as long as we're complying with the act, I didn't care where the lines got drawn, it didn't matter, I'm going to continue to represent everybody all the time, as much as I can, to the degree that the policies we put in place in the future allow us to do that. Anyway, that having been said, I just want to reiterate, and you said it, but I think it needs reiteration, it is our style. From day one, we've carried that torch, to always have public participation. I can't imagine us not having public participation. It is in everything we do. So, if there's such a time where we're not having, geez Louise, it's in everything we do, every plan that we've passed, I mean, from the Jefferson Corridor to the Youth Master Plan, to Temecula 2020, to, I can continue down the list, every single thing that we do has encouraged and commanded community participation. This will be no different. I just don't think we need to make the decision as to what that participation will be four years from now. Who knows what the situation will be? I have no clue. I mean, and we can make that decision, or the council can make that decision at the time. It seems just the logical thing to do.
Matt?
So, I guess I'm confused, then, because the staff recommendation basically says what you just said, Mike. I mean, you know, staff recommendation... I mean, you know, staff recommendation number one says, conduct citywide community engagement effort similar to previous efforts associated with identifying community priorities, right? So if, at a minimum, we're looking at this from, you know, a staff recommendation of either one or two, or I guess what Ms. Joel had provided us as options, anyway, if, if we know that we engage the citizenry in important issues, and we know that we're going to do it into the future on this important issue, that's all number one says. Number two gets a little bit more detail into it and starts talking about an advisory committee and so forth. But, but number one, at a minimum, just acknowledges that, yes, we're going to use a professional demographer, it's going to take about a year, we're going to reach out to our community, and in particular, you know, protected class stakeholders and communities of interest for input on these workshops. So I guess I'm not, I mean, that's, if that's what we do as a city, and that's how we engage as a city, then I'm not sure what the harm is in, at a minimum, just sort of adopting number, recommendation number one there as part of, you know, our policy. I don't think it binds anybody. I don't think any future council is going to say, you know, hey, no, you know, in this case, we don't want to engage the citizenry, and we want to minimize their input on this. Of course not, right? They'd be foolish to do that. So at a minimum, I guess, option number one seems just sort of like, of course, we would do this. So I don't understand the reticence to adopt that. At a maximum, though, you know, looking at an advisory group of sorts, you know, one of the things I see is we're here to represent, you know, not just our own evaluation of, you know, a topic area, but also input from our citizenry. And both in prior hearings and certainly the one today, the voices are echoing this sort of ethic of wanting some sort of advisory, some sort of formalized process. And, you know, my inclination is to say, you know, again, recommendation number two is broad enough that says, you know, you're going to have five members, and to the maximum extent possible, we're going to have, you know, the representation among protected classes and the intent of the CVRA. So I still don't see that it's binding future council to anything too specific, or something that, you know, a future council, hey, if they don't want an advisory committee and they just want to go back to number one, well, then heck, they can go ahead and do that. They're still going to have a robust community outreach program regardless. And as far as, I think, you know, the, the concept of, you know, and Mike, you'd said, you know, minimizing impact, I don't know if I'd necessarily use that term. I think the idea was that we all, at least during my tenure on the council before districting, we represented the entire city. And I think that's, that's been an ethic that has worked well with the city and clearly has made Temecula a success and a wonderful community that it is today. But I wouldn't say that districts necessarily, I'm fearful of impacts as much as I just want to make sure that we keep the concept that we are one Temecula, right? And that districts don't divide our community. I mean, that's really how I saw it. So I'm not necessarily worried about impacts, per se. I'm just worried that we create policies, which I believe staff are working on now, anyway, but creating policies that help ensure sort of the same type of thought process and rigor that we've had in the past that makes Temecula inclusive and fair. So, so anyway, so bottom line is, I'm not, I'm not confident that either one of these directions, but in particular number one, doesn't comply with all of our thoughts and everything that everybody's saying here, anyway. And I'm not sure that it's necessarily all that rigorous or binding, and it's, you know, open enough to allow some flexibility into the future as things change. And at a minimum, you know, if we're going to do anything, I'd say, you know, adopt the recommendation or option number one.
Thank you, Matt. Well, you know, when Mike mentioned minimize impacts, I interpreted that to mean some of the concerns that I had and that others expressed, that we have to be careful when we divide into districts, that we don't do it in such a way or structure policies or budgeting processes so that we have, you know, one district fighting against another or, you know, downplaying the importance of infrastructure in another district. So I think in terms of the impacts as far as budgeting goes, you know, infrastructure improvements and maintenance, and roads is a perfect example, we talked about that today. I certainly don't want, you know, Harveston to feel like they're getting the short shrift because the representative of Wolf Creek was able to, you know, I don't know, carry a bigger stick or whatever, and we're talking about future councils. And so I think those are the types of policies, I think, that we're talking about. And certainly, in that, in that discussion, in that consideration, I think everyone considered that the object of what we had done or undertaken was to ensure that people of protected class have, have a fair and equal opportunity to run for office and be successful. And that was really the whole idea behind this whole process. And Ira and I had had a couple of conversations. I said, I never want anyone of a different class to feel like they're not part of this community. We, you know, and I don't think we've promoted that. By the same token, I don't want people in one district to feel like they're less of importance than people in another district. So I think that's what we're trying to maintain when we talk about policies and procedures. You know, the way I looked at this, when I, when I considered the whole thing, I mean, I agree with the direction of the staff recommendations, but we have Roar Paw Ranch, Cypress Ridge, the Generations Project, another specific plan that'll come in at Butterfield and Temecula Parkway, and we have all of Altair to consider. We have, what, 10, 15,000 additional residents that, that aren't here to speak to any of this right now. And certainly, we don't expect all of those projects to be completed in the next four years. But I guarantee you, we've seen a huge increase in our resident population just in the last seven or eight years. So we know that we are going to have more residents, and I think by doing something right now relating to the 2020 census, we're going to leave out the possibility of having input from people who may have something else to add, or some, a new perspective or a new point of view. So I don't disagree with the directions that, that staff has presented, but I want to have an opportunity for the new residents closer to 2020 to be able to participate and provide feedback to us. And also, again, I do appreciate the fact that, you know, we'll be looking at a different council then. Not that we, not that we don't try and tie future councils' hands, depends on, sometimes we do. And by ensuring that we establish policies and procedures that promote equity in infrastructure and budgeting across the city and not by district, I think that that's kind of what we're trying to do. We're trying to establish policies now that, that future councils will hold to, even though it is very difficult to sit here and feel like you're taking something away from someone in the future and giving to someone else. But I think we're going to have many new residents that would like an opportunity to weigh in on this. So I, in that regard, I think taking an action now is premature. While I think our goals, and I don't think that the staff recommendations are that far off, you know, I have no problem with, with waiting down the road to establish a commission or a committee to help us establish the districts in light of the 2020 census. So I would agree that, you know, I want to wait. I don't think we need to do this right now, but when we do, I think we need to consider the whole reason that we've gone, undertaken this process to begin with, and that's to comply with the California Voting Rights Act that says people of a protected class need to be afforded the opportunity to run for office and be successful. And I'd like to hear from, you know, any new people that we have regarding the other things, the impacts, the benefits, and how we will put together such a commission. So Matt, do you want to raise in again?
Well, yeah, I don't, I, it's impossible for us to exclude future residents in this process, because the process wouldn't start until we're at that point where we need to redistrict. So anything we establish today doesn't preclude future residents of our city. The only, and even here, even in recommendation number two, it's not saying that we appoint members today. It's that we appoint them into that future, at that future period. But, but going back to, at a minimum, you know, item number one, it's, again, I'm just, I really am not understanding the discussion here this evening, because it says, direct staff to conduct a citywide community engagement effort similar to previous efforts associated with identifying community priorities. I think we all agree that that's something the city excels at and does whenever we have a priority of importance that requires engagement of our citizenry. So I don't think that's anything that anybody would disagree with. The second piece is, staff would specifically reach out to protected class stakeholders and communities of interest for input in, in the workshops, and in each district would educate and engage citizenry on line drawing process with assistance of a professional demographer. I don't see that as being anything unique to a process today or a process 50 years from now. We would still be doing the same thing. We would still be engaging that, and because of the CVRA and because of the intent behind all of this, we would still have not only an engagement of the community as a whole, but those in the protected class stakeholders and communities of interest. And then, you know, the last sentence is, it'll take about a year. Okay, so, you know, time. So, but, but it really only has two points. Number one only has two points, and I don't feel like it's binding anybody into the future. It fits in perfect alignment with what we've done in every major issue that we've faced since I've been on the council. And it, and it just speaks to the heart of what Temecula does in cases like this, to engage and make sure that, that we have representation. So I'm just, I'm failing to understand why, you know, we wouldn't want to adopt two core issues, engage our citizenry in the future and make sure we engage those that are of the protected class that the CVRA specifically identifies. I mean, those are things we would do regardless, so why wouldn't we adopt the policy tonight at a minimum for number one?
I think I'll clarify, when I said that I want to hear from future residents, I want to hear how they would establish a committee and how they would want to be represented with all the other criteria in mind. So Jeff?
Just a couple of additional comments, and then I'm going to propose something maybe we can kind of coalesce around. I, boy, to the best of my memory, and if anybody who's been around a while knows otherwise, speak up, have we ever taken a vote on something that was going to occur four years hence? I don't think so, doesn't mean we can't, but it just seems really odd. Why would we want to? Are we saying that future councils won't be as qualified as we are to make this decision? I mean, why, why do we, why do we feel the urgency? What is the urgency? I don't, I don't get it. But having said that, and this is also something that may be a little different, I don't know that we've ever done before, but let me propose it. I do agree that it's important that this discussion be memorialized and at least be exposed to the council at the time that they need to make a decision. We're close to it, we've gone through the redistricting, it's fresh in our minds, and I think our opinions certainly are valid. I hope they are, I think they are, all of us. What if we, and I'm looking at our city clerk and city attorney, what if we were to take a vote and just refer to it as an advisory vote to future councils? It's not a whole lot different, Matt, if you're saying future councils can revise it. We want to get our opinion on the record and in their hands, and I definitely agree there's value in that. So what if we take a vote on one or two or something else and didn't call it something that is binding today, tomorrow, or four years from now? It's a vote to advise future councils of what the opinion was of this council.
At this time, yeah.
So I'll make that motion. I don't know if we'll get support, but I'll make the motion that we do that.
Okay. I need a second before we can move forward or not.
Can we just get clarification on what that would mean from a legal perspective?
Sure.
And, and for the person who likely will be around in the four years that has to do with that, Ms. Joel, if you wouldn't mind commenting as well?
I don't see a problem with the council, I mean, basically what that would be is a de facto deferral with your recommendation to the future council. So I don't see a problem with that, because as the agenda is written, it's consideration, considering the creation of a citizen advisory group for redistricting purposes related to the 2020 census. So as long as you're within those parameters, you can certainly make a recommendation. And as you say, the future council could choose to agree with you or disregard your recommendation?
And the future council could, could discuss it with residents that are living in the city, new residents that are there at the time, as to how to set up the advisory group. So.
Can we hear? Ms. Joel?
Randy?
So I totally agree with Candace with respect to taking an advisory vote. With respect to practical application, I would want some clarification as to if you're going to take an advisory vote recommending option number one or option number two, would your expectation then be that we at some point would, would communicate closer to the time that the previous council on this date took an advisory vote? Or would it, would you be taking a vote on option number one or option number two? If you took a vote on option number one or option number two, it's clear direction that go out and engage your community with a commission or without a commission. And then if a future council said, you know, you're not using a commission right now, we would really like you to use a commission, then I'd bring an item to council and get a commission. With an advisory vote, I would want direction on the advisory vote means this.
Okay, if I can clarify my motion, then? That's exactly what it would mean, that at the appropriate time, as deemed appropriate by staff, going backwards from the time it's due, at least 12 months, knowing it may take that long, maybe it's 15 months because you want to make sure you have a buffer, that it come back for the council at that time as a de novo item, with the staff report that says, in writing, this was a discussion of this council on September 26, 2017, and this is what their feeling was. And yes, we should, I think we should vote one or two or something else and include that in the advisory. So that's my motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Yeah, I like it.
As a practical matter, would you like to discuss whether the recommendation is option one or two before you?
No, no, I think we, again, I don't think we should bind future hands if that's part of the intent. Leave it up to them to, to take a look at, you know, and, and basically, this recommendation stands as is. Here's what you have in, you know, how many years are we going to be dealing with this as a city?
So for clarification purposes, when you're taking an advisory vote, we just discussed with respect to, are you taking an advisory vote because your preference at this time is option one, or your preference at this time is option two?
It doesn't sound like it. It sounds like they're, we're sending it forward with no preference.
There's any preference.
And this was the discussion.
The intent of my motion was to have a preference, but I have no problem if we want to bring it forward. The whole idea is to let a future council make the decision, and I'm fine not leaning one way or the other.
Well, I do agree with Matt. Option one is, is basically a no-brainer option. I mean, I think we all agree that that's what we would do anyways. So I'm completely comfortable with supporting number one as, as an option that we're going to recommend.
But allow future council to have the conversation.
Absolutely.
And bring folks back into the room to advocate for a position, whether it's a formal advisory board or what have you.
Yes, and that was my whole point, that we would have new people, and those people should be engaged in how this should be done.
Madam Mayor?
Mike?
If I understand this correctly, we're recommending that a future council look back and hear that we recommend they have community outreach, really.
That's option one.
You know.
We don't know what future councils might.
I know, I, it seems a completely superfluous thing to do, completely superfluous. And let me tell you, you know, I could not predict what the exact circumstance would be, but if some city somewhere decided to fight this issue, and they happen to win, and it happens to get held up, I, if I'm still on the council at this time, would probably make a movement to go back to at large. I do not know what will happen. I guess we can make some superfluous motion that says... I guess we can make some superfluous motion that says, "The, what are you, in 2017, the 2017 city council recommends that you check with your citizens before you do this." It's ridiculous. I mean, am I missing something?
Well, you don't know what a city, future councils may do.
Mike, but one of the things we do best on this council-
Yeah.
-is to make compromises, and try to have everybody walk out of here feeling comfortable. If, and I do agree-
Lean up to your microphone.
I do sincerely agree with Matt, and Stu, I think, also said, we need to send some discussion forward, to let them know what the thinking was today. And so while I agree, it's not binding, it doesn't really do anything, except let them know how this council was feeling. So in that regard, I don't think it's superfluous, I don't think it has a lot of teeth, I would agree with you there. But I think it allows everybody to feel like our opinions were heard, and someday, when it comes back, those opinions may or may not have value, but at least they'll be heard.
And we don't know, we don't know what impact districting is going to have on future councils. We don't know that people may be elected that don't have the entire city's benefit, you know, in mind, knowing that protected classes, you know, still have the right to be represented, and still have the right to run and be successful in office. So, you know, four years doesn't seem like a very long time to make such a drastic change from being totally community-engaged and community-minded, to the fact that five council members may only be fighting for their own district at that point. I mean, I just don't know. Yeah, I hope that's not the case, but I think we don't know that, so-
So for clarity, and I'm being sincere here, the message to the council four years from now, quote, if you would, I'm paraphrasing, but maybe quote, so we can get this down, is, "We recommend you have community input when it comes to redistricting."
Yeah. As opposed to doing nothing, I mean, most of us don't want to do something concrete tonight.
It seems so benign, and so innocuous, and certainly, you know, okay, I guess, I mean, if that's what you want, it just seems like that's, I can't see somebody arguing against that. Yeah, I just see the argument, "Well, the Temecula City Council four years ago said we should have outreach, so there's people four years from now going..." But no, no outreach, okay?
You don't know what's going to happen.
Well, I'm play-acting it here.
But we don't know.
I'm play-acting it out. No outreach, but the council four years ago recommended it. I don't care what the council four years ago recommended.
It would be more like this, "I know what my people think in my district, and that's what I'm going to do." I mean, it would be more like that.
Okay, and so it's, "Four years from now, none of it matters," is what I'm trying to say. None of it matters.
Well, I don't want us to dilute the importance of what it was that we asked the city clerk to come back to us with, though. And that was that, at the time when we had this conversation as a council, and we're talking about the district issues, we were deeply concerned about several core issues moving forward. And one of those was, how will we, as a city, address the redistricting that's coming up not too far into the future? And whether we establish a clear direction and policy today, or we make a recommendation that says, "Hey, you better take this stuff seriously, and here's what we talked about" while this was still fresh in everyone's mind, and we still had, I think, a passion and a deep understanding of the issue, you know, let's refresh that when we get close to this in three or four years, whatever it is, and make sure that there's some record that says, you know, let's make sure we institute some sort of clear guideline, and have a conversation about whether it's advisory in nature, or whether we have it, you know, at staff's discretion. You know, I mean, this is what we asked for, she gave us exactly what we asked for, and now we're saying, "Well, it's kind of ridiculous." And maybe, maybe in the moment, it, you know, it wasn't, and I'm not convinced that it is. I think there's value in letting the city, the folks who are here, and those who have a deep interest in this, recognize that, you know, I hear what you're saying, I have shared concerns, and I'd like to make sure that a future council understands the concerns that I have about this issue, and that, you know, our residents have about this issue today. And I don't see any harm in doing that, and I think even if it's advisory in nature, I think we still hit on something that, you know, it may not, it may, you know, on the surface seem unnecessary, but I think it's a nice statement for folks into the future, and at least sends a clear message that we understand the importance of this, and we're willing to let a future council make their own decisions. But, you know, this is, this is how I at least feel about it today. Ms. Joel, I know you had something if you-
Well, Madam Mayor, I just, for clarification purposes, I just wanted to highlight in practicality how this advisory vote towards option one would work. So as indicated in option one, we would start the process approximately a year out. So what I would probably do, as I do with other notifications, is I would have an item on consent, that would be a receive-and-file item approximately a year in advance, that would tell the city council, "At this time, we're getting ready to begin community engagement efforts. On September 26, the previous city council that discussed this item provided an advisory vote for option number one, and if at that time that council chooses to do something different, they can always pull the item and give us other direction, engage a group, or whatever it is that they would like to do." But it would come back approximately a year in advance as an advisory, as a receive-and-file item under consent.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I disagree with that.
Okay.
I think it should come back in the timeframe that you mentioned, as a regular council business item-
Okay.
-just as we're looking at it today, that says, "Here are your options, maybe the council will want them, maybe they won't, maybe those options will be different," and attached to the staff report would be verbatim minutes, if we can do them, of this discussion.
So noted.
So we have a motion in a second?
Well, okay, so-
Well, let me amend my motion, Stu, if you'll amend your second, to exactly what was said, and to include option one in the advisory.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that's the motion.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, Mr. Cramatero, could you reiterate that motion? What do you expect staff to say? You mentioned option one, what else?
They're going to include our recommendations, or our discussion.
Something to the effect that the city council in 2017 recommends to the city council in 2021 that they do community outreach. Is that, is that what we're-
I think we cite item one as written currently, yes, but I think we cited it in a little bit more detail.
Specifically, "Reach out to protected class stakeholders and communities of interest, and input in workshops in each district would educate and engage the citizenry on the line-drawing process with the assistance of a professional demographer. This effort will likely take one year."
Yeah. Read that again, Madam Mayor.
"Direct staff to conduct a citywide community engagement effort on its own, similar to previous efforts associated with identifying community priorities, i.e., conduct workshops in each district, utilize social media, partner with school districts, et cetera. Staff would specifically reach out to protected class stakeholders and communities of interest for input and workshops in each district, would educate and engage the citizenry on the line-drawing process with the assistance of a professional demographer."
Okay, so-
They'll make special efforts to reach out to-
Protected classes.
Protected class stakeholders.
Why can't we make special efforts to reach out to everybody?
Well, it says that.
Why do we have to call out protected classes?
Because that's the whole point of the CVRA.
Mm-hmm. Conduct citywide community engagement effort.
Which we've gone full circle now, and I really don't want to beat this anymore, we probably need to bring it to conclusion, but when we had our discussion, and when we voted on this thing, and Matt, listen, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it's to my membrance that nobody was really in favor of going to districts. Now, by reading what you just said, we're actually reaching out to protected classes to emphasize districts, and to emphasize that division. That just seems a little, we, that was, it's counter to what we all discussed when we adopted the districts. So, but now we're saying, "Well, but we're going to not only have outreach, but we're going to go to the protected classes." It's just contradictory to what we-
But does that preclude us from going out to everybody with the same zeal?
I hope not.
It says it right there in the language, so-
Citywide community engagement.
With an emphasis on reaching out to protected class, why not just with an emphasis of reaching out to everybody?
Well, it says they would specifically reach out to protected class stakeholders. That means they would, they would make sure that, I don't know, of some nonprofit organization that specifically associates or supports one of the protected classes, maybe make sure that they have invitations, so that they know about it, rather, you know, so that they feel included. I don't see this any more than really just making sure that everybody is included.
Call for a vote.
Yeah.
Just do it.
Okay, so then we'll go ahead and call for the question, and we're clear on what the motion in the second is. So I'm calling for the question, and let's see if we get it up on the screen. Okay, so go ahead and vote, and we are one, two, three, four, with Mr. Nigard voting no. So the direction staff has is to move forward, sharing this discussion with that-
Yes, so the motion is, "Motion to adopt option number one as an advisory vote, and return to the city council approximately one year in advance of community engagement efforts, and agendize the matter as a council business item."
Yes.
Thank you.
Shouldn't you read into the record the specific language?
Option number one is the exact language that-
Yes, and that's the one that we read, and then the copies of our discussion will be included in the, you know, to future councils. Okay, all right. So that was item 21, departmental reports, sub-boarding commissions, anything?
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Zach.
The fund commission is up.
Your fund commission is there.
So it's always my honor, as a community service commissioner, to travel our city and see our facilities, and our parks, and attend events, and this last week was something special. I went over to Mary Phillips Senior Center and had their 24th anniversary party, and I met Bea Barnett there, and we hooked up with staff over there, and we served lunch, we talked with everyone, there was singing, there was history lessons. It was just like, it's one of those events that just sort of gets you, you go over there. And for me, as a resident now, I remember when I was a kid, we would always, we would walk to our senior center as in elementary school, we would walk there, and we would serve lunch and talk, and you had a senior buddy, which was kind of cool, so I had a few senior buddies that day. It was just a, just a fun day all around. There's a second slide with some of the people that are there. There we go. There's some folks in this photo that were like original founding members of the senior center, and I find that hard to believe that they were there 24 years ago, but they said they were, that it was kind of neat to be a part of that, and hear a lot of these stories, and celebrate that day with them. That's something I thought I'd share with you tonight.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Looks like a lot of fun. Mr. Telesio?
We need to have more fun on the planning commission.
I think you do need to have more fun, yes.
Right now, I have nothing to report.
You're going to be busy, though, you've been really busy. All right, Bob?
Two items that we had at our last meeting, you approved tonight, and our meeting this Thursday, we will be discussing a new crosswalk installation policy, and I'll report more on that next meeting.
All right, thank you. So, Mr. City Manager, anything? Oh, board and commission reports, I'm assuming, you know, nothing? All right, so-
Just two quick things, Madam Mayor. I want to wish Pat Thomas happy birthday tomorrow, and Chief McConnell, happy birthday on Thursday, so we didn't want those to go by without recognizing both of them. Thank you.
Okay, and City Attorney, anything?
Nothing to report this evening, thank you.
So I will entertain a motion to adjourn to October the 10th.
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we stand adjourned, thank you.